I just started the recording. Call to order. We do the pledge of allegiance before we get started. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation. Under God, indivisible.
Divisible with liberty.
And justice for all. It's good to see you all tonight. With the dilemma with this past month with the meeting getting messed up. But let's start to consider a vote for the mission statement. Ally, can you read what we had written last time we had met?
Yes, I think that's a great idea. Do we need to review the minutes from the past meeting and approve them? Or are we, does that?
Yeah, we can do that. We'll do that first and then we'll move on to the vote.
Okay, and I'm sorry, do I need to read the minutes from the last meeting?
Yes.
Actually, was everybody given a copy of the minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not necessary to read it. You're just going to ask if anybody sees any mistakes or needs any changes in the past. Hold on a minute.
Okay, did anybody see any discrepancies in the minutes that were sent to everybody?
No.
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 The only discrepancy I noticed was I put the incorrect spelling for Steve Mullins' name. Unfortunately, I put Steve Miller instead of Steve Mullin. So I can adjust that.
Okay. No offense taken.
I'm sorry.
Not a problem.
It could be worse, I guess.
That's right.
All right, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I agree.
Give me a second.
Second the motion.
Thank you, Robert and Sean. All right, I will move forward with.
We're gonna take a vote on it and it's gonna be.
All in favor.
Can we review, can we review the mission statement again? Just to make sure there are no changes and no other input. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I was gonna ask if you could share the screen, Ally. I don't know if you can do that. That would be helpful.
And that would be great because I wasn't present for that meeting either.
Sure, let's, can we all do a virtual approval of the minutes? Like a virtual roll call, I guess. Sean, why don't you start?
Can you repeat that, Ally?
Sure, can, are you in favor of accepting the minutes? Yes or no?
Yes.
All right, Kristen, yes or no?
Yes.
Steve?
Steve, yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Roberto?
Yes.
And Lisa?
I wasn't present.
Okay. I guess that means. That's okay. All right, thank you.
Nicole just locked on too.
All right. If you want, Sean, if I can share the screen, maybe we can do the.
I just, I just heard the screen.
Do I have permission also to share?
Yeah.
Okay. It says host disabled participant screen sharing.
Hello. Trying to look for it because. Check your computer soon. Is that working?
Well, let me check. Not yet.
Okay. Let's see. For some reason, it's not letting me share.
All right, if you maybe try. Clicking the up arrow to the right of screen share.
The up arrow?
And then. Where, where you initially shared the screen, if you click that again. And then select multiple participants can share simultaneously.
Multiple. I have post attendee, screen. Whiteboard, iPhone.
All right.
Is that working?
Not yet. It might be in the settings. Does anyone else know how to? Help Sean?
I wish I did. I know nothing. I am not computer literate.
So Ally, is there any way that you can actually just share, open up the, the mission statement and share it from your side? Can you just bypass?
I can read it to everyone out loud, but I cannot.
It's showing the host giving her permission.
Right.
How's that, Ally?
Yes, great.
We'll get there.
We'll get there.
Yes.
You don't do this much Zoom stuff on construction sites.
Whoops. All right, well.
All right.
Just open up the correct one. Don't save, share screen. There it is. All right, can I?
All right.
See here?
Yes, we can see now.
Excellent. So right now, what we developed at our, one of our previous meetings. That the mission for the Commission of Human Rights is to. The purpose of the Dyane, the Dyane Commission of Human Rights is to promote and protect the rights of all people. We aim to empower and build a stronger, more unified community. That recognizes inclusivity, acceptance, and respect of its diverse population.
Should we get rid of that "the"? Because you didn't, when you read that, you didn't say the word "the" after recognizes. I know that's picky, but sounded better without the "the."
Okay, so that recognizes inclusivity, accept.
I don't, yeah, I don't know. What do you think? When you read it, I didn't hear you say "the."
Yeah, I think the "the" should be taken out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
May I interject?
Of course.
Um. I think it's, I think it's well-written, my opinion. Something that was salient that really stuck, stuck, stuck. Stood out of my mind as I read mission statement and the goals. And I went down to the core values, which was. What I've learned is what was really impactful is what is said in the beginning and what is said at the end. And what stood out for me, respect, integrity, innovation, equality, and awareness was the word equality. Is there, I, I'm proposing that somehow the word equality be in. Inserted in the mission statement. For example, we aim to empower and build a stronger, more unified community. That recognizes the inclusivity, acceptance, social equality, and respect of its diverse. Population because it's there in the mission and then it's there in the core values. And I think the word, when we get to the goals somewhere. The principles of equality. So it's, it is consistent, mission, goals, core values. That's my. Dime, my 10 cents.
I would, I, I'm sorry, Nicole, let me turn on my video. I would just like to add also, if we're doing that, if we are able to include justice, social justice. Because that's, I think for most of us, I'm sorry, there's a lot of background noise here tonight. That was one of the main things that we're seeing, a lack of social justice. On the internet, in the community, in, in local surrounding towns. So just if we're gonna be adding words, I think justice is one that should be up for consideration.
Social equality and justice, sure.
Thank you, I'm gonna mute again.
Yeah, the word social equality and justice really encompasses. Equal rights, special liberties, which is one's status, one's civil rights, the freedom of speech, property, all of that. That's all included under the umbrella of social equality and justice. But to have it there and visually, I think it's, makes it a much more powerful, clear. Mission.
Okay, what I'm going to do right now is read the definition of social equality. And then I'll also read the definition of social justice.
Okay.
Would that be helpful?
Absolutely.
Okay, and again, all I did was I just Googled the word social equality. And the quick definition I have for a qual, social equality is. Affairs in which all people within a specific society or isolated group have the same status in certain respects, respects. Including civil rights, freedom of speech. Property rights and equal access to certain social goods and services.
Yeah.
So let me, I just. Pasted that here. So if people want to read that again, Roberta, I do think that it's. I, I think that, that, just that word social equality is important. And appreciate you bringing that in and educating us about that. Now Nicole, for social justice, I have the definition as. Justice in terms of the distribution of wealth, opportunities, and privileges within a society.
I think that's fine.
Yeah, absolutely. Just to think quality and justice.
All right.
I think that's what it needed to tighten it up a little bit.
Yeah.
All right, so how about? I know we worked so hard on this last time, but now I'm getting stuck on the word acceptance.
Oh, okay.
I know that a lot of people. You know, one of our goals is to educate the community and help people learn about, you know, our diverse population. And that includes respecting people. Do you think that people might get stuck on that word acceptance? You know, hey, maybe someone would say, you know, okay, that's fine that you are, you know. You belong to this special class, but I don't have to accept it or. Well, I guess maybe I don't have to like it, but I need to accept it, so.
But I think what we're doing here is we're making the mission for what this commission is about, right? It's the commission's mission.
Okay, right, and we want to, we aim to empower and build a stronger community that includes. Or that recognizes acceptance.
Right. I think everybody, everybody wants to be accepted, so I don't see a problem with that word, to be honest with you.
I was gonna say we're respected, but you have respect. I mean, another word that is, in my opinion. A step down from acceptance is tolerance.
Yeah.
I, I don't know if that's, if that's an acceptable substitute or just keep it at acceptance. I, I'm fine with how it is, but if.
I don't want to lower our standards.
I agree. Thank you.
All right.
This is Lisa. I'm sorry, I'm not on camera, just it helps with my connectivity when I'm not on video. But this is Lisa Minor and I, I agree that we should not be substituting that word of acceptance to tolerance. I think that this, and what we just added, I think, did just kind of tie it all in together. I think it, it looks beautiful.
Yeah, and acceptance, the word is, if someone has a, any group has a problem with the word acceptance. That's fine, but it is the acceptance of the fact that this group. Is entitled to justice, social equality, and inclusivity. Regardless of how one's leanings or proclivities. That has to be accepted. The respect has to be accepted. Justice has to be accepted. Yeah.
All right, I totally agree. I, I don't disagree. I like the word. I just want to, I don't know, maybe I'm just a little sensitive in case other people, you know, don't. Want to accept it, but again, our job is to educate, so.
Exactly.
Exactly.
I would say to that, Ally, the people who don't want to accept that are not going to be hung up on one word. They're gonna have a problem accepting this whole thing. That's the point of the commission and will, you know.
That's right.
Changing a word is not going to change the people who really don't want to see this succeed and, and part of the town. And, and the absence of that word won't impact it for people who do want to see us succeed and make change, so. I would just, my two cents on that. And I'm muting again.
All right, I think Nicole makes a really good point. Let me read it one more time and then maybe Sean, you can take motions for approval or acceptance.
Absolutely.
So right now, the purpose of the Dyane Commission of Human Rights is to promote and protect the rights of all people. We aim to empower and build a stronger, more unified community. That recognizes inclusivity, acceptance, social equality, and justice in respect of its diverse population.
I like it.
Bingo. Can I have a motion to, to vote on the mission statement?
I second the motion. You do.
So Roberto seconded. Who was the first one, Sean? You?
Yeah, I guess so. Yeah, that'll be fun.
Yeah.
Okay. Kristen, do you agree?
Yes.
Is Jill here tonight?
She is not.
Okay.
It's her daughter's birthday.
Ally, do you agree?
Yes.
Bob?
I do.
Lisa?
I do.
Nicole?
I do.
Stephen?
I do.
And Roberto?
I do.
Okay. So we're all in agreement that the mission statement shall pass.
Sounds good.
Unanimously.
Let's move on to the goals.
I actually started writing up a few goals on my own and I was just curious in general how people. What their thoughts were as far as how we wanted to write these goals. Do we want them to be so many as that or more of like, you know, like three or four, you know, statements? I know we were just kind of throwing ideas down. But I just was kind of curious as to what people's thoughts were on that.
Yeah, well, if I, maybe if we, as we're seeing them, if we hear it read out loud, we might, we might, some of us might. Recognize, are we being a bit repetitive and then, you know, or we. Is that all right that we just go through each one and just?
Right, yeah.
I think, I think too that we need to figure out what our priorities are. Let those goals be our major goals and then maybe. What our secondary stuff is, is some little goals for us to reach as well.
Okay.
And if I can, if I would like to, if I can share with you all some of the things that I wrote, it's, it's more of a, they're kind of summarized. I think maybe incorporating some of these things, so. You know, whenever you want me to share those, I'd like to share them if I can.
Anytime.
I, I tried to put everything together. I wish I had it typed down, typed, but I don't. You know, and they're in no particular order. So the first one that I, I put together was in, was increase community awareness of possible human rights violations. Through education and community programming. To report human rights violations that conflict with our mission. Work collaboratively with local groups and community organizations to promote acceptance and eliminate intolerance. And then as a goal, organize community events that foster inclusivity and celebrate diversity. So I don't know, those were just a couple of things that I put together to try to bring them all together. Because I don't, I don't know, when I read that, that just seems like so much like, you know, boom, 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 boom. But maybe, um. Maybe I'm off the ballpark with that.
No, I think you made some valid. I, I, I like, what is the awareness and HUM? What is the HUM?
Nicole, I'm sorry, Kristen, can you read number one again?
Sorry, I know. It was increase community awareness of possible human rights violations through education and community programming.
Okay.
Yeah.
Ally types fast.
I know, I talk fast too.
I think Kristen talks faster. Increase. Of possible human rights violations through.
Through education and community programming. I mean, we, this was just things that I was kind of throwing down. To report human rights violations that conflict with our mission. And then work collaboratively with local groups and community organizations. To promote acceptance and eliminate intolerance.
Hold on, Kristen, she's still on the one.
Oh, sorry.
Work collaboratively with.
Local groups and community. Organizations to promote acceptance. And eliminate intolerance. And of course, you know, these words can be interchangeable, whatever words we want to choose. And then the last one was organize community events. That foster inclusivity and celebrate diversity. Yeah, that's kind of the same thing. I don't know, I was just kind of jotting down ideas. Oh, another one I had thought.
And celebrate diversity, Ally, I think.
Oh, sorry.
Did you say promote, Kristen?
What did I say? I don't know, I got stuff written.
Yeah, I think that's it, Ally, if you get that.
Yeah, yes, yeah, yeah, that's the general idea.
Oh, on number two, the only thing I have a problem with, with that one is to report human rights violations that conflict with our mission. I just think it should be reports, human rights violations.
Yeah, I think, I think so as well.
That's fine, yeah.
That would be, that would be to the, to whoever the proper government agency is.
Absolutely, yeah.
And I think you do have that above.
Uh huh, right. And then the other thing I thought too is to facilitate a community where all members have the opportunity to contribute and thrive. Yes, that kind of falls in what the mission statement was too, but.
Oh, that's true, that's true.
Facilitate a community that.
All members. Have the opportunity to contribute and thrive. I don't know, I just wrote it down. I thought I would share.
Oh, that's excellent.
That's excellent, yeah.
Sorry, did we look up at the other ones though and see if any of those should come down and be included or?
Right, yeah, I think kind of just meshing them all together.
All right. If we do a group chat, if I do like a chat in Zoom, does that get recorded on the? In the cloud? I'm just trying to find a way. Can you guys read this? Is it too small?
That's good.
Okay, all right, I just want to make sure that we can still see what Kristen has, so we can just start eliminating things. But I guess this works out great, okay. So. Number one, to learn from one another and members of our community without bias and promote growth. What is that similar to?
To learn from one another without. Hmm.
That's comparable in my mind to number five, all community members have the opportunity to contribute and thrive.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. I just, something just came into my mind. Continue and fry, thrive without fear of. I don't know, without fear of discrimination?
Retribution?
Extinction.
Yeah. Oppression, discrimination, I'm just throwing up these. Oppression or. Or discrimination, I don't know if this.
I, I like the discrimination, but.
That's my, usually what comes out of my mouth first is what I.
Yeah, I, I think that covers, you know, many different.
Yeah, Kristen, really, what you have, what you have listed, what you, and I think you nailed it pretty much.
All right, let's, um.
So, okay, so do we still need number one? Or is that number one sort of, but number five is, I think, is that what, okay?
All right.
Oh, you have it, I see it, yeah.
Yep, but we can remove it all together.
Okay.
Number two is to report civil rights violations to the appropriate government agencies.
Which is the same as number two.
Right, do you want to put the government agencies down there or?
Yeah. To the applicable or appropriate government agencies, yeah.
Ally, you are stellar at this, I'll tell you.
Can we get rid of maybe government? Just because there are other agencies that you could report a human rights violation to and government.
Okay.
Trigger words, that's one of them right now.
No, that's a good point.
Well, it would be an example of an agency that I would report a human rights violation to.
So ADA, the police.
DEA.
But of course I can't.
No, that's okay.
Acronyms, but.
Right, I'm not, I'm not challenging you, I'm just trying to.
It could be a board of education, it could be a, you know.
Which I guess ultimately are all a trickle-down from the government, but that word, if we're, you know.
All right, so number two, you can remove. Now let's try number three. To, to role-play in moving from passivity to action in human rights violations. To play role, maybe I didn't catch.
To play a role, yeah, maybe.
Well, when we play a role, is that what we're doing when we report human rights violations? When we work collaboratively with local groups, when we organize, when we facilitate, when we increase community awareness? Is all that playing a role in moving from passivity to action? Question.
I would say it definitely has a role in it.
I can't remember if this was more saying that we were gonna play a role or we were going to educate other people to learn how to become from more passive to more action. I think a lot of people don't outwardly feel a certain way, but they also don't. You know, speak up against it, I guess, for lack of a better words. It's just a passive approach to it.
Yeah, kind of like that bystander approach.
Exactly.
Moving away from that and calling out.
Right.
Well, then. Well.
When we combine that with, sorry, Roberto.
Oh, don't go ahead, please.
I had, I had a lag. I was just thinking if we could combine number three with number one. And maybe get rid of the violations in number one because we have it in number two. And then we could just make that concise, because the, I mean, moving from passivity to action. It, that's part of it and. concise, because the, I mean, moving from passivity to action, it, that's part of it and that comes with increasing community awareness. We could probably make that one.
I think that's a great idea, definitely, because we're raising.
Human rights violations in both one and two, because we, we also don't want to come across as punitive when we really don't hold any actual power in the town.
Right, exactly.
You know what I mean? So I think if we're looking at how this reads to other people, maybe. That's all right.
No, I think that's a really good point. Increase community awareness of possible human rights violations through education and community programming. Um, and then number three, work collaboratively with local groups and community organizations to promote acceptance and eliminate intolerance. Um. Even Roberto, I feel like you two are really good with wordsmithing.
Which, which are we finding here? Again, I, I can't see the top, so I, I forgot what we.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. Nicole, did you say that we wanted to combine Kristen's one and three?
No, I'm sorry. I meant number three that we were addressing up top into number one that we have down low, if we can kind of play around with that, if that makes more sense. But I am going to turn off my camera for one second and just have to help me fix with something.
Well, I mean, you could.
Can you just, we can move that sentence, yeah.
I, I don't know if it, to actively increase community, but now, because when you're active, you're no longer passive. Uh, if you, if you've, if, if we feel that you need the word passivity, actively increase community, but I don't know how the increased community awareness, I don't know how that's done passively, but if actively is the adjective that you feel we need, then I think we use actively, which is.
What about proactively?
Can we just put a comma after programming and put moving from passivity to action and all human rights violations? I don't know, I'm not very, I don't, I'm not very eloquent with my words and grammar, but.
I do increase. I think actively does it for, but. I do increase community awareness.
Or just say actively increase community awareness of possible human rights violation through education and community programming, comma, moving from passivity, well, then we got a lot of.
See, but yeah, moving from passivity. The actively does, takes care of that.
Yeah, and I think too, like, we're, we're trying to be more positive and more education, you know, just, you know, spread it, spread more awareness, so, you know, maybe having that word passive might not give off a good.
Yeah, so let's, let's be positive, let's be positive about it, and I think, I, I think number one is fine.
Yeah.
Alright, so, um, Steve, real quick, um, just after a quick Google search, if you're proactive, you're making things happen instead of waiting for them to happen. If you're active, you're doing something. Um, I mean, I, I see where you're coming from with the proactive, uh, and that's you make things happen instead of waiting for them to happen versus active is means to do something. And I know we know these definitions, but what I'm thinking also is, we, I don't know, I don't want also people to think that we can make mountains out of molehills and just, you know, you see something, say something. Um, maybe don't predict that something's going to offend someone until you really know as well.
Yeah, that's a good point, Alan.
Alright, so let's keep it as actively increase community awareness, excellent. Alright, so number three of our, um, yeah, number three of our original, of our draft goal, whoops, uh, we can eliminate. Moving on to number four, to address and educate the isms.
That was nebulous for me, uh, uh, um, when we, the word isms refers to question mark, dot, dot, dot.
I think it was.
I feel, I thought the first word that came on was racism.
Yeah, but I don't know another example.
I know.
Ageism, sexism, there's, lots of isms.
But you know what? It's sort of, you have it in number five, but not limited to race, gender identity, sexual orientation, religion, so.
Those are all of those.
Yeah.
Also, um, age, race, sex, disabilities. As well.
Maybe instead of just not using that word isms and specifically identifying it like we did of those specific.
So again, I think number four could probably be removed on the upper por- portion and because we're really, as someone mentioned, we're really addressing it in, in, in number, um, five.
I do like that number five. I would like to see that, but not get incorporated somewhere.
Uh huh, yes. Yeah.
If we ever list out the isms too, we have to make positive that we have them all, which can be problematic because they're ever changing, that's a
Right.
concept, I think, so we would be careful and better off to avoid that if possible.
Uh, let's put number five down and, down below with, may call it number five and maybe, you know, reshuffle if we need to, but I, I think, um, oh, okay, you're on a different page, so it's.
I didn't realize that. I think we already had a number five that we weren't looking at.
I didn't need, so number six is fine. I just, I was going in sequence.
Alright, let's try to get these all on one page. Okay.
Good.
Alright, so, number five, we just added, so we're going to keep. And again, that is to respect and empower all members of our community while ensuring inclusivity regardless of, but not limited to race, gender, identity, sexual orientation, religion, socio, socioeconomic status, age and ability. Alright, let's, um, keep working up here to make it smaller, and then if we need to wordsmith anything else, uh, down here, we can. Alright, so we're keeping number five. Number six, to encourage all community members to feel confident.
How would one do that?
You could add that at, well, I mean, you could say, uh, number five, facilitate a community that all members have the opportunity to contribute, contribute and thrive with confidence without fear of discrimination.
That's a good point.
I think, did we say that some, oh, without fear, yes, put, yeah.
With confidence.
And.
Right? And without fear.
And without fear, yes, confidence, oh no, well, yeah, and thrive with confidence without fear of discrimination.
Without fear, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think we need the and, okay.
Remove and, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Yes, yes.
Facilitate a community that all members have the opportunity to contribute and thrive with confidence without fear of discrimination.
I like that.
Yeah, uh huh.
Right, that one was added because it was similar to number five. Alright, number seven we had was.
Somewhere, or work collaboratively to encourage, to partner with town representatives, work with local groups. Are town representatives or local groups?
We could add the town representatives.
Or add, yeah.
I, I think adding it is, is a good idea.
So just add it to number three below.
Love it with town representatives, local groups, yeah.
Um, okay, work collaborative, collaboratively with local and town groups, no.
No.
Well, comma, town and community organizations.
Local or the town organization?
But isn't local.
But they're not the representative, well.
Were we talking, were we talking town departments?
Hmm.
Well, that's the community organization, I think, is it not? I don't know if we're getting. I, I, yeah, do, do you, do you all like the phrase town representatives? Is that, if that's what you want to keep, then we keep it, work collaboratively with town representatives.
I like the town representatives personally.
What's the difference between local groups and community organizations?
Yeah, I knows.
Right, I mean, it's, it's kind of parallel.
So I think like groups like Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, like the, you know, are those considered organizations? I guess maybe they are too, you know, I mean, we don't have a ton of businesses in this town to for support. I know a lot of the bigger towns rely heavily like on the YMCA and the Boys and Girl Club and things like that. I mean, not that we can't reach out to those other, I would consider those local, um.
How about, how about community organizations and groups, or groups and organizations and just put it together?
Yeah, or you could just get rid of local groups and, or want to.
Yeah, well, that's, that's what I'm saying, get rid of, get rid of local time, um.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Organizations and groups and organizations, yeah. Something like that, I think that.
Yeah.
A little.
Work collaboratively with town representatives and community organizations and groups to promote acceptance and eliminate intolerance.
I think I'd get rid of the and between representatives and community and just do a comma there.
We're collaboratively with town representatives, community organizations and groups to promote acceptance and eliminate intolerance.
How about instead of to promote, in promoting? Does that read better?
We're collaboratively with town representatives, community organizations and groups in promoting acceptance and eliminate intolerance.
Eliminating.
I was going to say, yeah.
Yeah. I think that nails it.
Yeah.
Does everyone agree?
Yeah, sounds good.
Yeah.
Alright, um, so this one was done. As we added that to number three, and act as agents of change. Don't, I honestly don't remember why this one was bolded. Um, I think last time I was just like typing, typing and then, um, you know, and now for these scratch notes, I'm using the older one, so.
It may not, would that be the last of the goals? Yes?
Active agents.
If it's going to, in my opinion, if it's going to be the last of our goals, in my opinion, to make it impactful to act as agents of change toward the principle of equality.
Social equality and justice.
A social, yeah, I, I, again, it's, it's what we said in the beginning and just somewhere in the middle, and then this again, because that.
Um, can I just add something? This is Lisa. I, I think that this, um, is kind of repetitive i- in the same statement that we had used earlier about moving from, um, passive to active. Um, did we get rid of that statement? I, I can't see because of where the screen is located.
You have that, Lisa. Uh, number one, we have actively increased community awareness of possible human rights violations through education and community programming.
Okay, so I may be thinking of, um, one of the ones that was at the top that was talking about moving from passive to active.
I think that was eliminated, I think we crossed that out.
I think, yeah.
Okay.
Number three, it was number three, and we kind of incorporated it into number one by changing the beginning of the sentence. Is, is there something that you think we could in, in like incorporate it down there?
No, I think it's just, um, I'm not sure if I feel like redundant is the right word, or if it's just kind of, um, yeah, I guess, I guess redundant to, to what we've.
You mean this last one that we're doing?
Yeah, the last one, yep, the act as a change.
Personally, I think all of them are all, you know, one through six, we're acting as.
Agents of change.
Change.
That's what I mean, yeah, I think, it's just general, and what's already been said.
Somewhere, I think towards the, whatever it is, I think we need to end with, towards the principle of equality, that is our mission. That is, that is our principle, that is our core, the equality. Somewhere toward. There is, let me see. If you don't like if this is your change, you want to be, um, I just lost it.
Um, while Roberto thinks, I would say.
I just lost it.
Um, Kristen, I loved the idea of like shortening it up and making it really like bold and concise, but we are now going back down the road, uh, like, we, we were at eight, we've cut, we're now at seven again, so I think if we're, you know, if the point was to be a little bit less wordy and a little bit more paying for our buck, then we probably could leave it where we were at, maybe. Just for the, the fact that that was kind of the thinking in combining them, so.
Are we doing, we have the mission, the goals, are we doing, what, what, what was the other? Are we doing the values or is there?
Are the core values, is, is that necessary thing?
Right, that's what I was wondering, the same thing.
I don't.
I think we hit the core values in our goals as well.
I agree.
I mean, we could maybe incorporate a few words in some of those statements if we wanted to, if there was some, you know, some strong terminology that people felt really, you know, should be in there, um.
I think we hit most of them other than the last two, right? Hate and bigotry.
But I think that we did address that in how we've, you know, we've worded things on the opposite, and I think that anything we would be saying in our core values is basically what we've already said in our goals.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, because the opposite of intolerance to hate and bigotry is tolerance of, you know.
Rights, exactly.
Acceptance.
So. Again, I go back to whatever our last goal is, I strongly believe something towards the principle of equality.
I agree, so that we have a theme that kind of connects the mission.
Again, I go back to pe- people are impacted if they read this, what's initially said, and then we remember what was last stated.
Alright, so.
Oh, I missed it.
How about, can I just, I'm sorry, um, was somebody about to, okay, um, when we're looking at those goals, you, you had just scrolled through them, so I, I think it was number five, um, that we had left that if we possibly just move that one to the bottom, um, versus rewording another one, I think that, um, yep, number five over here. I think that moving that one to the bottom, um, that one is pretty impactful.
Yes, and I would, again, I think, where was I? Okay, good, good, copy, paste. So I could see, facilitative without fear, I just, to facilitate community, wanting us to be able to contribute and thrive with confidence without fear of, of discrimination. Toward the principle of equality. Toward the principle of equality.
So let me read this out loud. Facilitate a community that all members have the opportunity to contribute and thrive with confidence without fear of discrimination towards the principle of equality.
I think if, if we're going to keep that between community and members, I, instead of that all which, I think would. Which all members, which, which, yeah. In which, in which.
Where, I think. In which. Facilitate a community where all members have. Or in which, yeah.
Yeah.
Facilitate a community in which all members have the opportunity to contribute and thrive with confidence without fear of discrimination towards, toward the principle of equality.
We changed that to environment, we can't facilitate a community. Like grammatically speaking. We're not, I mean.
Okay.
That works.
Environment, is that, is that okay for people?
Yeah.
Yeah. Sorry, my dog's going crazy.
Towards, is it toward or towards? I never know.
I naturally, I naturally said towards, but. Facilitate an environment in which all members have the opportunity to contribute and thrive with confidence without fear of discrimination toward the principle of equality.
Yeah, I'm gonna just say one thing, I don't know if this would work. How about without fear of discrimination or retribution? Would that work?
What do you mean by retribution?
You know, I mean, if everyone be confident that if something is wrong or if someone feels prejudiced against it, they can come forward and, and, and bring it up without any type of retribution, without being penalized in any way.
That works if we put toward the principle of equality.
Yes.
After confidence and then it's karma without fear of discrimination or retribution.
Go ahead, say it again.
So if we put toward the principle of equality behind. Oh, sorry. Visual, so toward the principle of equality goes after with confidence. And then karma without fear of discrimination, you guys know, there you go.
Alright, let's try it again. Facilitate an environment in which all members have the opportunity to contribute and thrive with confidence toward the principle of equality without the fear of discrimination or retribution.
That was good, yeah.
I like that.
Idea Nicole.
Does anyone like retaliation instead of return, retribution?
Oh, I like retribution. Retaliation sounds more physical or like damaged, retribution can be, it's a broader umbrella.
More broad, yes, yeah, I, I like that word, it just came to me.
It's not used in a lot of the, the abuse cases I hear.
You hear more of the word retribution or?
Retaliation, in favor, but it, but it could be more physical than. As you said, I think, or it's more broad to be retribution.
Could be, yeah, more encompassing, but. You know what, team, this is looking really good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's.
Coming along.
You know, it's probably good in a way that we all had a, a little bit of time to think about it without rushing. It's, it's just tightened it up and it, it just, it's more professional.
Alright, so should we, I know we had time to, you know, kind of sit on the mission statement and we, you know, we're okay with that, are we voting on the goals tonight as well or are we going to wait?
We have a motion to, to vote on.
Yeah, do we think, should we wait until our next meeting to confirm them so everyone has an opportunity to review them or, I know.
I think we just put them all together, we had, we had them down to look at them and then we all brought, you know.
Exactly.
Everything to where we wanted to foster what we wanted, so I think we take a vote and if someone feels differently, they'll.
And I mean, in the event that we ever had to have modify them, I mean, that's something that we can.
Because we can, we can really, we can treat this as a living document if some were to go really, you know, the opposite direction. But I think we're there and I, I personally think let's just do. If Ally can read it all again or someone can read it all, read it out to make sure it all flows, I say let's vote on it. Get to the good stuff that we can do for the community, right?
This is Lisa, can I just ask, it is on our agenda, right, to, to vote on these tonight?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is it?
Okay, alright.
Do you want me to read the mission and then the goals or we, you just want me to read the goals?
The goals are just fine because we already voted on the mission.
Can I ask you a question, are the definition of social equality and social justice, is that staying in?
Yeah, we can leave that in there.
Yes.
Staying in there, okay.
I think it's staying in, hold on. Alright, I think it's staying in because we already voted on it too.
Yes.
Oh, I thought that was just there as notes.
I thought it was just, you were just defining what socially.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, this is.
I'm like, oh, we're gonna have to define everything.
No, that can just. Oh, I see what she's doing, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to have it down there.
Right, those two definitions can be removed once it's.
I think, I think, I think it's good having those two definitions in there anyways, because if anybody publicly was wants to see what our goals are, so they can see what the definitions of social equality and justice are.
Yeah, what I'm going to do is, I will keep a, like a, kind of like a brainstorming notes document, I won't include it in the, like, the meeting records but if it's okay, I'll, I'll still kind of keep it as like a jot paper, so down the road, we want to change something, we'll always have our notes. So let's, let's vote on the goals. Number one. Actively increase community awareness of possible human rights violations through education and community programming. Report human rights violations to the appropriate agencies. Work collaboratively with town representatives, community organizations in groups in promoting acceptance and eliminating intolerance.
Should we just get rid of that groups? It seems like a lot of words. I'm sorry.
I just don't know if I should put a comma in between organizations and groups or, I mean.
Organizations slash groups, I don't know, it's weird.
We could just say with town representative and the community.
Yeah, and community organizations.
Or just and the community.
Yep.
And that encompasses everything.
Yep.
Work collaboratively with town representatives in the community in promoting acceptance and eliminating intolerance.
That's fine.
Number four, organize community events that foster inclusivity and celebrate diversity. I'm sorry, to respect and empower all members of our community while ensuring inclusivity regardless of, but not limited to race, gender identity, sexual orientation, religion, socioeconomic status, age and ability. Facilitate an environment in which all members have the opportunity to contribute and thrive with confidence toward the principle of equality of equality without fear of discrimination or retribution.
I like it.
I like it. I, I, I think it's good, it's.
Can we take a vote on this?
Yes.
Alright, Kristen, you approve?
I do.
Kristen, do you motion to accept?
Yes.
I, I second.
Right, do you want to do the virtual roll calls, Sean?
Yeah, Kristen. Let's see, Ally.
Yes.
Bob.
Yes.
Lisa.
Yes.
Nicole.
Yes.
Steven.
Yes.
Roberto.
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Alright. Great, so now we have goals done and. And we also agreed that we were not going to have core values.
Right, because.
Because.
Basically, you go into our core values, these goals.
Alright.
So here's, here's a question, could it be called, could it be entitled goals and, and values? Or is goals good enough?
We could put goals and values.
Why not? That, you know, that way we have it all there.
Yeah.
Goals and values.
Can we do that now that we voted?
Let's, let's keep it as just goals and then down the road, if we want to, you know, kind of add a little spice to our group. We'll add some values.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
That's fine.
Alright. What is next on our agenda?
Open discussion on the budget. So Brett wanted us to put together a budget, so I could meet with him and discuss what we want to do. With the budget for right now, whether it be signs, we'll come up with some things, but like I before I went to the hospital, I told Ally, make sure that we put in there something for training as well, so.
Yeah, I think a budget for education, you know, being able to get some local speakers, I mean, some people do it for volunteer too but, you know, there are a lot of local folks that, you know, will speak.
Yeah, I think teachers, we call them workshops.
Yeah.
I don't know, like what is a, what is a reasonable budget, what is a completely outrageous budget? Like, are we thinking a couple thousand dollars, are we thinking a couple hundred dollars?
As saying, you know, we definitely want to do some advertising with signs or something like on that sign so figuring out what we're going to need and then kind of pricing everything so that we can go to the representatives and, and get approval.
So can we all do a quick Google search and just?
Do you have any input, Mr. Pacheco on that?
Yeah. All the departments have been asked to do level funding. We don't have a budget, this is a new committee, so I think we ought to initially have a reasonable budget.
Right.
Need something for education and training, we need something for printing and supplies.
Oh, printing, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I'm thinking, in the line, now, don't forget, I'm going to, whatever budget you guys approve is going to go to the select board or the board of selecting.
Yeah.
Out of that, so I'm thinking, I feel very comfortable recommending to the board of selecting or the select board, a thousand dollars. I probably need just seven fifty and one, two fifty and another, you, you guys can decide. I think we got to, because once we come up with a budget and, and this budget is going to be controlled for the first year anyway by the select board. So whenever we form a committee and they get a new budget, the select board keeps it for one year. You come to the select board and ask if you can spend the money for, for whatever, you okay it or deny it. And then the following year, you have control over the budget, you guys decide how you want to spend it, so. So it goes to the select board and then from there it's going to go to the finance committee. They're very conservative when it comes to spending money and then it's going to go back to the select board. Either we're going to agree with what the finance committee has done or disagree and then it's going to go to the town. So this will be on the June, so we're not gonna, we're not gonna get a budget until July first, assuming that. But we won't be spending any money.
Are we allowed to raise funds and do fundraising as a group? Is that permissible or?
We have to be very careful with that because.
Okay.
On the Malady sheet, she frowned upon that and we just, we're in the process of hiring a new town administrator. I'm not sure what his position is going to be. I'm not opposed to what I, I know, for example, there, there's going to be a community garden next door to a town hall where we knocked down the house. And then we're asking for donations, so.
Chris can ask it, can we accept donations?
Have to be very careful with it, when it comes to money, this. My, as my former boss said, this is what puts you in jail, if you, you're always going to watch the money and.
Yeah.
Got net and you can't have it seen as a bribe that you're going to go one way or the other because some.
Right.
You just got to be careful with that, so.
Okay.
Suggesting a thousand dollars, you guys want to go hire, it's, it's your decision, I'll, I'll recommend to the board, whatever you guys want to go. You have to be reasonable.
That was good.
Ken, could I just ask real quick, is grant money allowed for a committee like this or is that kind of going to the same?
No, we can, we can apply for grant money if you send in grants out there that usually goes to the town administrator that will file the grant, we can assist in filing the grant, that's a good point, absolutely, we can, we can see what funds are out there. Or groups, you know, are giving grants for something like this, sure, that, that was a good point.
My other question is, do we have to go with specific town? You know, contracts, people who do the printing, do the signs, do, do we have flexibility with that or?
Have flexibility, now we, you know, the board of selecting, for the first year, we're going to look for the cheapest, you know.
Right.
But because it's less than ten thousand dollars, it doesn't have to go out the bit necessarily, we don't have to get. I'm not talking about a lot of money, but, you know, for example, I'm also a non-voting member on the Commission on Disability, we're having something printed and we're going to go, I think we're going to go to BP, because they may be the cheapest far as, but we're gonna, we'll look to see what's out there.
Okay.
Can we also utilize volunteers, so like professors or activists that come in and provide that type of, you know, like a training or something like that on a volunteer basis?
Absolutely, yeah.
Not that I know any people who give up their time for free, but. Yeah, that's true.
So Ken, I have a question for you, Ken, you mentioned July first, so that means nothing would be available for the next four to five months as far as funding from the town, correct?
Well, you could, you could go to the select board and ask for some funds for something specific. And, you know, we've been very conservative, concerned about the budget because of the pandemic, we don't know how taxes are going to, you know. Be coming to the board, the select board for something reasonable and we have the funds in a, in a in one of our funds, reserve fund or whatever, it's possible.
Okay, so following up on that, you said the new budget July, is that July to July? Is that the fiscal year?
It's the fiscal, July to the end of June, so.
Okay.
Have our annual town meeting, it's, it's in June and we go in the, the we let the public know what the budget is we're seeking and they decide whether or not they're going to approve it, they can amend it or whatever. But there's a whole process, goes to the chairman of the select board, then it goes to the board of selecting, then it goes to the finance committee, then it goes back to the board of selecting then it goes to the townspeople.
Okay. And you, you feel that a thousand dollars would not be a red flag but are you suggesting that anything over that would be?
I, I think you should ask what you think you're going to spend.
I mean, we're just, we're getting into this, we have no idea what printing and signs cost and, you know, I mean, are a hundred signs, two hundred dollars or, you know, just, just brainstorming here.
Printing usually goes by, by lettering, so it's, you know, that's the thing we got to look into. Like, if we're going to do BP, because they're probably, they probably are the cheapest. You know, we probably should think about how many signs that we're going to need so we can get a price together, so we can figure all that stuff out before we have, we submit the budget to the selectman.
When is that due by? When is the cutoff for that?
It was actually due by the end of January.
We're doing good.
Doing good, I, I think in March. We're doing good, I, I think in March, we're gonna actually be sitting down with the uh, the finance committee, but it's, it's regarded that the signs. Um, I don't think BP's gonna do the signs, I don't think they, they capable of doing that, but I, I can tell you, um. It can get, signs can get expensive.
Yeah, I know.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm concerned with.
Well, we could do a one banner.
Yeah.
What is the sign? What is the, I would, I thought there were yard signs that say like, we believe that black lives matter and blah, 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 and that people could buy them and then put it in their yard.
That was gonna be my question, could we come up with something and give the townspeople an option to purchase them if they wanted to on their own, or is that a no-no?
I, I'm not sure if it's, I, I can't speak for the board, I don't think that that's. Uh, normally how we do it, right, I believe that in Eastern where my daughter um, lives and the group of she's, and I think they. They purchase signs and then the townspeople purchase the signs from them, but I'm not sure if that's the exact process that.
Gotcha.
Right wants to, to use. Uh, I, the way I was, had that, nobody would purchase it, that the town would pay for the signs and those that wanted. Put the signs in front of the house, uh, could put the signs in front of the house, I. There definitely signs that I think that clearly state what our goals are. My daughter Stephanie, she has three signs in a, in a yard, and they all reflect what we just approved, or you, you guys just approved the. Uh, goals and mission statements, so there are signs out there, I don't know how much they cost, I, I should ask Stephanie. Uh, I just haven't ran a campaign out, this is three years ago, signs can get expensive, you gotta buy the hardware to put the sign in the ground, plus the uh. You know, I, I bought, uh, just to give you an example, I bought uh, four uh. Big signs, I think they were three uh, three by fours or two and a half by fours, which is a bigger sign, I think that cost me a hundred dollars.
Oh, wow.
Wow.
Well, yeah, you'd have a pretty good sense of it for, you know.
Yeah.
For your yard signs that you've used, right?
Yeah, there was a company, I don't even know where the company is, um, but there is a company that I use and they, they print, printed for me over three hundred signs, I believe. Uh, so it got kind of expensive. Uh, but I, I think a thousand dollars would cover the signs. Whether that's all we wanna cover, I don't think so, because we have a whole year now that we.
I know.
Right.
Yeah, that, that's why I, I, I came up with that question at first, it's like, whoa. Uh, a thousand dollars, I mean, if that's what will be allowed, that's what would be allowed by the, the town, but it's really not gonna go very far.
Yeah, I, I'm not opposed to uh, you asking for more, I can, I can tell you that in the past, working through different budgets. Number one, uh, the board of selecting, next year, they're gonna look at the budget and see if you've spent. So if you haven't spent the money, they're not gonna give it to you again.
Right.
The money, they're gonna put it into the general fund, but that money will uh, you know, we're gonna see what's being actually spent. So uh, and it's, the second thing is, if we go for a thousand this year and next year we go for two thousand, that's, I can tell you, that's a red flag.
See, that's my concern. That's my big concern, if we underestimate and, and. And go too low, and that's like, whoa, that only covered about a fifth of what our objectives were, then you, you know, that, we could get shot down easily.
Yeah, I, I can tell you, if it's a fifth of what uh, we're gonna need, so you're talking five thousand, I probably, I would oppose that.
Yeah, well, I'm just using that as an example.
I think it's reasonable to ask for two thousand dollars, maybe a little bit more than that, you've gotta decide how you wanna allocate it in these different funds. Um, but that's, that's also reasonable too, I mean, this, this is gonna be our first year. We're gonna have more expenses probably the first year than later on, if, if, you know.
Right.
True.
You, you say we give out two hundred signs, the next year we're not gonna be giving out two hundred signs, assuming that the same, same, it's gonna be. A few more people moving into our community, they're gonna want signs, but it won't be the same as the first year.
That's right.
So, whatever.
I have a.
Yep.
Sorry, I have a question relating to our terms while we're talking about it, cuz the budget goes in for July, right, our term ends in June, then do we re?
This, the, the last meeting that the select board has in June, we reappoint everybody. If someone wanna get reappointed, then you let the uh, the town court know that.
Okay, and if new people were interested, that's the time that they would?
They can do it now, because now we're short, we're short two members.
Yeah.
Okay.
And anybody can apply now, normally what happens is, in the past, once a committee's been established. They would interview the new uh, potential candidates for the committee. So if somebody else was interested, we'll probably have them come to one of our meetings and we would interview them if we felt it was necessary, then make a recommendation to the board of selecting. The other thing is, you can just let them, the board of selecting make that decision, now we've, we've approved all the members here, we've had no problem with the members that we have, and. I don't anticipate anything in the future, but. We need two more members and they can join at any, uh, anytime.
Okay.
Okay, do we think that, so I kind of like where Steve was going at, you know, I mean, maybe. If we ask for a little bit more money, um, and then, you know, the worst that they're going to say is, no, that's too much. Either come up with another number, or the finance committee gives us like an alternative, you know, then we can kind of work off of that. Also, the first year, as Lisa mentioned, you know, if we're going to move forward with some education, I think grants will be a great opportunity, which are free, and I feel like. You know, right now, since a lot of these topics are so hot, you know, there's probably other places that are doing webinars that are offering, you know, grants for some of this. Another thing is, if we're going to start going in a little bit, you know, slower and just trying to gain awareness. Do we wanna jump into the signs right now, right this year?
Well, we wouldn't be able to until July anyway, you know, so we have, we have four to five months.
Six months, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, going also.
If we, if we don't go in, if we don't get a little um, assertive with our planning, it's gonna go by fast and we're not gonna accomplish anything.
I was just gonna say, um, and I was thinking about this last time, and I don't know what this looks or feels like to everybody else, but. Um, drafting and sending out a townwide welcome letter. What the commission is, what we're trying to do, asking for. You know, people who have ideas to, I don't, I don't know what that looks like for public input yet, but. To kind of let it be known that, I, I mean, I know that it's known, but I think that there's a, there's some misconstrued ideas about. What our purpose is and what we're here to work on, as I've seen on social media and different. Discussion boards, so I think probably a welcome letter so that people don't think we're coming in trying to. Blas their flags, it's not our purpose, like, we're here, what are we trying to do?
And I think too, that's a great idea, because I think that'll open up, because I, I'm willing to bet that there's probably people living in this community that would be willing to volunteer their time to. Um, you know, educate or have had specific um, scenarios or situations that have happened in this town, so they could share or wherever they are. Um, you know, I find that there's more and more people that are wanting to share their story or educate other people, so might have people step up that wanna volunteer their time for that as well, I think that's.
Not only that, but if we advertise kind of who we are, we're probably going to find a lot of people that are saying, hey, my rights are currently being violated, I didn't even. That someone could help, help me in this situation.
Right.
Um, you know, it could really work both ways, what about Facebook, um. You know, I just feel like it's, letters I think are going to be expensive with postage and, you know, paper and ink and all of that, I, I don't know where that comes from. Um, but is Facebook or Instagram?
The town has an email page, right, Ken, they have um, an email list that you send out to?
Not that I'm aware, we have the Facebook page.
Right, there's not a, oh, I thought there was an email list that went out, no? I could be making that up, I don't know.
That's for the price of uh, mail into all the residents, there's roughly uh, thirty-three hundred households in Dayton.
That would cost a, there, there goes the budget.
Yeah.
And like a commission on disability, we're talking about a mailing, and basically it's, it's to let people know, it's important that the commission on disability make everybody aware. Uh, of, you know, we can help them with their needs, whether it's help, you know, their depth, so we need, they need help when they come to a town meeting or whatever. It's about fifteen hundred dollars, is our rough estimate as to how much it's gonna cost.
Wow.
The mail?
The mail, it's eighteen or nineteen cents per household, it's not a forty-four cent or forty-five, whatever the stamp's on now. But that's, we, we're talking thirty-three hundred, uh, plus the printing of it, and we don't have a copy of it here, but we're thinking of putting this. I think it's a five by nine inch, uh, six by nine inch card that will go to everybody. Uh, and those expenses to prep, but that's why we're hoping a BP can do it for us, uh, but it's about fifteen hundred dollars, so. I think, you know, we can. Use the Facebook page, that doesn't take care of everybody, not everybody's on, on Facebook, so that's the disadvantage of it. Um. We, you know, we can put it on the town website, we can have.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that.
Website, you know, when they list all the different things, we can have our own, and people can go to it and see what we're all about. Uh, they can file a complaint if they have a, you know, concern or whatever.
We could just do some one-page flyer type things too, to put up in the local stores, like Johnny's and Alice's and things like that. I mean, that's just another, you know, people are standing in line waiting to get in, what have you.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a good idea.
Yeah, but I, I like the idea of the, the social media, right, that's, that's what everyone is doing to, to get to a larger au- audience. You know, whether it's on the town website, you know, for committees, right, it could be under there. Um, the Facebook page, that's a good way to start. And uh, then just follow it up with more physical type things like signage, et cetera.
Are you talking about doing our own Facebook page, creating on, uh, your, our own one or on the town page?
On Facebook page, but we can also put it on, something on our website.
Okay, yeah.
People can kind, but just, as we all probably know, social media, you've got these uh, computer warriors that are gonna just.
Yeah.
Hey, we're gonna see some hate stuff come out, I'm sure.
That's, I don't know.
It's gotta be, yeah.
Okay, um, if we put it on the town, the town stuff, do we have? Access to that, to answer anybody's request for information?
Yes, I mean, I would have, you can't just put something on the town, um.
Right.
I can, but I, I can do it, I'm one of the administrators for the town. But you can, if somebody says something, makes a comment that you, anybody can respond to that.
Okay, alright.
You know, they, they may be, um, they may be occasions where we won't allow comments, especially if they start to get stupid.
Right.
Right, right, uh, but social media, I mean, people, people are pretty nasty, so.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, the social media presence is what prompted me to join this group, so.
Me too.
It's been problematic for sure, so I think how we use that and being mindful of the fact that it can get very divisive and feel like. A problem more than a solution, so.
Actually, I'm saying the opposite, Nicole, uh, sorry that you had that experience, but if it wasn't for social media, I wouldn't have even known that this committee, you know, came about.
Me neither.
But I followed the Dayton page, I, but I'm not involved in like any school groups or, you know, I think I'm also in like Positively Dayton or something like that. Um, but if it wasn't for the town page, I, I wouldn't know, but I.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean.
We are, we are, this commission is of, of, the, the members of the commission, we are pretty much of the like mind, that's why we formed this commission.
Yeah.
And uh, having been on previous boards and committees. Uh. Part of the territory that we're in is uh, opposing points of view.
Mm-hmm.
And we just have to, as part of our mission statement, without fear of discrimination or retribution, you may express. Uh, you may offer your opinions, uh, that is welcome. Uh, and we have, we just know that we will have opposition, just like in any other committee, it's going to happen. As we say in Spanish, you know, you, the, the more people involved, the greater problems there may be, so. We just know it's, in all likelihood, it's going to happen.
This is Lisa, um, I just wanted to comment for a second. Um, in regards to, you know, Facebook, it, it definitely can serve its purpose for putting out the information. Um, and, you know, notifying people, it's going to be, you know, the comments that Ally, that, that we're talking about. Um, which, that's, um, I'm thankful that you have not been exposed to that. Um, and sometimes the, the commenting or the posts get taken down after they become so problematic. Um, but any time that um, something is posted, um, at, at least I can say like on some of the, you know. The more um, le- less official Facebook pages, I'll say, like, not like the town of Dayton, um. People, th- there are a myriad of reactions to that. And there are several people who eventually end up chiming in with very negative and hateful comments. So I think we do need to be prepared for that, but it shouldn't, it also shouldn't stop us from putting information out there. Um, so we, we need to be able to use it for the platform that it is, um. To provide the information, um, not necessarily though to serve um, the rest of our purposes.
Yeah.
So I have a question, is there a way, I mean, just because we're informing. Somebody of something, whether there's going to be a speaker or a fundraiser or whatever the case may be. Why do we have to have feedback on that?
You can shut off comments, I don't know, I don't know if it's allowed, but I know you can.
But I mean, you know, if you're just informing someone, you don't have to have, necessarily have feedback, you're just putting information out there.
Right.
It's like.
I agree.
You know, not everything warrants feedback.
Yes, you know, I agree with that, for example, Positively Dayton. When I announced that I was running for uh, select person, and then when I announced I was running for reelection, I was given permission to put my statement. On Positively Dayton, it's gonna be positive, that's the name of the.
Yeah.
And I was also told to not allow any comments, so.
There you go.
Right.
Because, you know, when you're announcing you're running for something, you're gonna get some. You're gonna get some crappy, and the person who runs Positively Dayton said, absolutely, announce it, don't attack anybody else. Announce what you're doing, but don't allow any comments, and that's the way it works, so. I haven't seen that necessarily on the town, towns Facebook page, cuz we do like to get some input, you know, some comments or whatever. But I, I tend to agree, if we're making an announcement, we've got a speaker coming on this stage, in the old town hall, blah, 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 why do we need? Uh, comment?
Exactly.
I agree, yep.
I agree.
Yeah, yeah, I, I just thought of that, I mean, you know. We're, we're trying to do something good here, we don't need to get beat up for it when we're just trying to advertise some goodness for the.
About everything is open to debate, this is just dissemination of information, that's it.
Yep.
So before we get like too much off topic, I know we, we do need to decide on a um, a budget, and. What we're talking about is so important that I don't, like, I feel like we can table this for next week, because we're gonna have to come up with these. You know, we're going to have to kind of talk about the next steps and whatnot.
Yeah.
Um, so. I don't know, what do you guys?
How about twelve hundred?
I was.
I was thinking two thousand.
I was, I was fifteen as well.
I was thinking fifteen. I thought fifteen is a happy medium.
Fifteen?
Fifteen.
That's what I thought.
Um, do we have to present how we're going to break it down?
Yes.
We do?
I, I believe you do, Ken?
Yes, you do.
Okay.
Okay.
Spend, you know, what category you're gonna spend uh, the money on, I, as I mentioned before. Uh, it's tough to increase your budget, and I'll give you a good example. I went before um, the select board and then the finance committee, ask, and the town. Uh, asking that our ADA coordinator get a, a stipend, I suggested two hundred fifty dollars a month. For a year, which is uh, three thousand dollars, the finance committee objected to that, I went before the town and asked that they approve it, and the town did approve it. But it was at a special uh, town meeting, which was in October, so. From three thousand dollars, I reduced it to two thousand dollars, because we're talking eight months, not a whole year, until the next budget. So the following year, I went to three thousand dollars. The finance committee did not approve it, they said, you're increasing, I said, well, no, I said, I explained to you when I spoke to you last night, as well as the select board, as well as the town. That I'm asking for two hundred fifty dollars a month, and then we only had eight months, why am I gonna ask for three thousand, we should only be two thousand, but now we're talking a four year, it should be three thousand. They rejected it, as well as the town agreed to keep it at two thousand, so we gotta be careful. If we, if we're saying twelve hundred, for example, that may be the budget for next five years, just know.
That's why I'm saying go higher, folks.
You can go higher, and what's the worst that can happen, it gets.
Say no?
They get, they get.
Reduce them out.
I mean, if you consider that one mailing is fifteen hundred dollars.
Exactly.
And not that we're gonna then go. And not that we're gonna then go do a mailing now, obviously, we are more informed, we would use it on other things, but if that's how quickly a mailing can add up, then I say if we can go a little bit higher, I mean, speakers, education, if we're doing any type of workshop, or there's gonna be some literature involved in that, so, I mean, I think the, the cost of a mailing is an eye-opener.
So two thousand?
Two thousand.
Let's go with two thousand.
But, um, can we also agree that we're not going to go any lower than, you know?
Fifteen?
Do we have a choice?
It's not like, let's make Let's buy an automobile. I'll pay up to
Alright, so let's say, um, two thousand dollars, um.
I, the town pays for the cell phone, everybody gets a cell phone, no, I'm joking.
Yeah.
Thousand is reasonable, just because the finance committee may reject it, doesn't mean that we still can't go before the town and ask for, for the monies. But we have to be prepared to go be, to the, to the town, right? Yeah, I spoke in behalf of it, I believe Brett spoke in behalf of it, and the ADA coordinator spoke, and some other people, but you gotta be number one, Sean probably will have to meet with the finance committee as long, as well as the board of selectors, so the, the chairperson usually goes and presents so we gotta have a, a number one, a reasonable budget, I think two thousand dollars is reasonable. I don't know how you wanna break it up, you know, seven fifty for training, or maybe a thousand for training, a top, a thousand for printing and supplies. I, I'm not sure how you, uh, you wanna break it up, but, uh, I think two thousand dollars is reasonable.
I, I think that would be a, a good way to do it, um, the thousand and a thousand. Simply because, um, we don't, we don't know what training's gonna cost us.
No.
So if we go and tell them at least a thousand dollars with the tr- bringing speakers in to train us and to train others, and then the others for printing, like, um, Ken said, it, it doesn't look like we're spending everything on printing.
Right, yeah, I think right there just put signs, um, mailers, et cetera.
Yeah.
We know how expensive everything is, and, you know, it'll go in no time, and we have to spread this out over a year. Whoo.
This is Lisa again, um, i- in my experience i- in having trainers in the past for, um, special education, um, for the CPAC.
Yeah.
Uh, it, it's, it's very difficult to find people who are willing to volunteer their time.
Right.
And, um, most of the trainers that we located were anywhere between two to four hundred dollars, um, for a one-to-two hour um, session. Or if you, um, if you wanted somebody through like a commission, um, you have to be like a member, and then you have to pay a yearly membership. So you're looking at approximately two to four hundred dollars a training, um, or speaker, so just to put that in perspective.
So we're basically looking at maybe two trainings a year.
Yeah.
We could also kind of, a- at least initially, transition from this idea of trainings to community activities, obviously, that would have to wait until we're a little bit more COVID clear, but maybe as we try and gain some footing in the town, instead of
Mm-hmm.
offering trainings, we, you know, do like a movie night with, is some type of movie that's geared towards families that highlights inclusion and, and that kind of thing, so that we're hitting the whole town. It's not so much like educational, it might be more affordable, and we start off on a friendly note instead of a preachy note, I don't know if that's
Yeah, it's valid. It's definite, that's, that's valid, you know, it's like, we're not limited to just printing and, and mail and, um, trainings, that's for sure. Yeah, make it more fun.
You know?
Family movie night, you can socially distance, we could do it outside, use the track and field. It's gonna cost some money to get a screen and some speakers, yes, but that's what the budget's for, and we're gonna hit a lot more people than a training or a workshop.
Mm-hmm.
That's a great idea.
And help me understand, what are the big, um, community happenings on a yearly basis that everybody looks for?
Cow Chip Festival, that's
What is it?
Cow Chip Festival, that's the one.
What is that?
It's a cow poop thing. Welcome.
You're not from Dayton. That, that's, that's the highlight of Dayton.
There you go.
Wow.
The thing is, we could, um, ask the Lions Club to have a table at the Cow Chip Festival, so we can have maybe hand out something.
Yeah.
I would know who we are, the same thing, if the Dayton, I'm a member, my wife's the president, I'm the treasurer of the Dayton Star Society. We have a strawberry festival, we get a lot of people to go, it's at Under the Sun. Uh, we weren't able to have it this past year because of, uh, COVID, we may not be able to have it this June. The Cow Chip Festival is also in June, and the other thing is the Art Festival in
I was gonna say that, yeah.
In, uh, November.
At Arujos.
At Arujos, ask for a table there also, that would provide
Would, would they allow something like that?
Yes.
I, I'd be surprised if they did, you know, we can't
Uh, yeah, these are all, these are all different ways to get
Being present.
Out there, you know, and I, it's, it's just thinking a little bit differently than it's just not black and white, you just have to be creative with this stuff, but, well, it's nice to know that we do have a Cow Chip Festival, and we sell strawberries, and we do have some art, too. That's true.
Yeah, there is, uh, my experience has been that, um, there are, at least my experience has been, there have been people within the school system, counselors, uh, um, police officers who were willing to volunteer their time
I agree.
To speak, so. Yeah.
Maybe we could open like, uh, a poetry or writing contest to the kids through the school, if we can make a connection, it is Black History Month. I know we're short on time.
Oh, really?
But this is an opportunity to connect with the school, even if it's not, we don't have months to plan it out, say, hey, doing anything with the kids on writing, uh, any, like, anything like that, that then could be utilized maybe later at the Art Festival, or as a contest, or how do we help, because we want it in the schools.
Right.
These are opportunities, we have all these different months, right, that we talked about, and we can fly flags, or we can incorporate it into the actual people we're trying to help for the next generation to be more accepting and inclusive, so.
One of the things that I think that the Eastern, um, one did is they actually just did an art contest for what their, um, what their picture would be for their Human Rights Committee, I believe what it was for.
Their lo- their logo?
Yes, their logo, so, and they actually put it out, I don't know where exactly it went out to, but it was a contest, and then they narrowed it down to a small handful, and then they put it out to the community to vote, so it kind of really brought all different aspects of the community together, which I thought was
Yeah.
I know at Dayton Elementary, uh, it must not have been la- maybe last year or the year before, when they did the rocks, the kids got to decorate the rocks, it had to be a positive message. We have opportunities to, to engage people without
Money.
Right.
Yeah.
We can save our money for things that
Yep.
Excellent ideas, really, these are very good ideas. And I'm sure we're giving our Rehoba counterpart good ideas to kick hers stuff off. Now, this is good, this is like motivating, I think.
This is why I wanted to be on the committee, like, this is the stuff that I'm really excited for, I was a little bit nervous, you know? I don't know, in the beginning I was motivated, and then I kind of was like, whoa, what am I getting myself into? I feel like this is the fun stuff, you're right, and we don't, it doesn't have to be controversial, it can just be, you know, a fun opportunity to just you know, embrace everyone, maybe make a
Nice people.
Yeah.
You know, the other thing we have to be aware of, there's a lot of noise all around us, no matter what we do, right, external noise. You just have to compartmentalize it and, and, uh, ju- just stick with what, what, the, the goodness of what, what this commission can do, you know, with trying to make, change is tough for some people, whether it's good, bad, or indifferent, but I think there's some good people on this team, and, you know, if this message is spread, fantastic.
Yeah, and there's some great people in the town as well, so I think, uh, I think they can advocate for the group as well.
Absolutely.
You can also use, um, going back to schools with, I just thought, since you're using art, uh, you can, uh, art, writing, uh, music. You can use, uh, for example, of, it's in this month, it's Black History Month. Who are the black artists that made contributions to America? And, uh, of course, in the most ideal situation, you could have the band teacher, uh, prepare, uh, uh, an ensemble of students to play music for, like, for, uh, Duke Ellington. Or you can have a vocalist sing a so- a song, uh, music that, uh, Ellet, it's Gerald, Gerald sang, or Billie Holiday, so, uh, you know, and then that tied in with art, if you're, you, if you're promoting a black artist with their music
Mm-hmm.
pictures to go along with the artist, or, you know, so, I mean, it it's, it's, yeah, it's much more difficult during COVID, this pandemic, but it's, some of it's doable.
Yeah, I mean, I think, so if we wanted to do something like that, we would have to vote on it, and then have someone go to the ta- like, go to the school or to the principal to talk about it, or, you know, you know, Nicole is already involved with the school, could she just go and say, hey, you know? How does that?
Yeah, I don't know what, uh, 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 with this pandemic, what how music departments are surviving, how they're faring, I don't know.
They, they did amazing, did you see their little outside, uh, ensemble they put together at the, on the holidays?
Yeah.
It was seen by twenty-seven thousand people, and then they made the Today Show.
Really?
Nine AM on Christmas morning.
Mm-hmm.
Pretty amazing search. Yeah, it was very special.
Does Dayton have a, a senior center?
Yes, we have
We have prime time.
Yeah, we also have the council aging at the Lincoln Village, we have, we have a group there, uh, a room that we got to do something there, but we have prime time, it's closed to the public right now, obviously, because of, uh
Yeah. Even if we made like a slideshow with people singing, but anyways, like
Music, just like shows, or just, uh, black contributors, it doesn't have to be music or, or, or artists, it could be athletes, could be, um, architects, uh, Maya Angelou was a poet, you know, um.
If we wanna get involved at the school, do we need to all vote on it, and then, you know, and then get it approved, and then have someone do it? Or can we just do it? Try it?
I think the committee would have to, uh, vote on, are you talking about contacting them now? Because it's, uh, Black History Month?
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's too
I think it's too soon.
Yeah.
I think we're talking examples, because I don't know what's, like Hispanic, Hispanic, uh, Hispanic month, I think that's, I can't remember, is it October? I can't remember.
But I, I, I think on, going back to the logo idea, I think that we can do before school gets out, I think that's a good target. Uh, before the school releases for the year, that might be something we can, once we get through this agenda, we can put that on the next agenda to bring that, and come up with some ideas about running an art contest, or music, or whatever it is to come up, some, somehow to come up with our logo, uh, for our signs. I think that might be, I, I love the idea of having, you know, our own students, uh, come up with a, uh, you know, many, many signs, and then uh, have folks vote on what they think our logo should be.
They could even vote at it on the Art Festival.
Yeah, perfect, like that.
You mentioned the agenda, can we get back and wrap up the budget?
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Alright, so I, uh, motioned for two thousand.
A thousand in education training and a thousand in, uh, printing and supplies?
Yes.
Yeah.
I second that.
Okay, do a formal vote? Kristen?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Roberto?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So, do we wanna set a date for next, um, meeting?
We had one more item on the agenda.
Yeah. I thought we're doing the letter to, to, that was sent to Brett for next, next month.
I think you need a, um, a motion to continue that to the, uh, the next meeting.
Do we wanna continue that to the next meeting, or do we wanna start discussing that?
Let's wait till the next meeting, I feel like, um, you know, if, if we have to end at eight thirty, we only have about, you know, a couple minutes left, and
Right.
Let's end on a positive note, of all of us being excited.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of heat in L O, so.
Oh, that letter, okay, oh, yeah. Yeah.
Have a second to, um, continue that to next, um, meeting?
I second that, it's Lisa.
Okay.
Uh, who first did it, or who?
You did.
Who, me?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, oh yeah, I, I was kinda saying enough the record, but yeah, it does make sense for us to wait until next meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Um, what is it called, delay?
Motion to continue.
Motion to continue. So, let's vote on that, Kristen?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Roberto?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Okay, tell me one more time, is it a motion, or just mo-
A, a motion to continue.
Six, seven.
Item six.
I think that's a discussion that warrants more than eleven minutes.
Yeah, this one's gonna take over.
Right, okay. Alright, uh, now are we going to vote for the next meeting?
Yes.
Did we agree that we're gonna be the first and fir- for a while anyway, the first and third Tuesday of the month?
First and third Tuesday, is that what you said?
Yes, I thought that's what
So we're only doing once a month?
Yeah, we're only doing once a month.
Once a month.
I'll, I'll talk to Lee Ann, because I think I told her the first and third, so, that's fine, however, no, that, not to book us for, uh, the sixteenth.
Okay.
So what is that, March second?
Like, I, I know what you're saying, Ken, at one point we did mention, until we can really get this going, try to do two a month, and then go to one a month, but
So, um, March second, which is, uh
Tuesday?
Okay.
Is that good for everybody?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep, yes.
Yes.
Yes, oh, I know.
Who made the motion, who seconded?
Who, who made the first motion to?
I was, Ken, or Steve?
Yeah, Steve did it.
Where we make the motion be, uh, we're gonna meet the, the first Tuesday of the month. So we'll know, we'll know the next week, let Lee Ann book us for, uh, uh, Zoom, the first Tuesday of the month for the next few months.
Okay, sounds good.
So the motion should be, uh, we're gonna meet monthly, first Tuesday of the month at, uh, six thirty.
Do we have a second?
I, I can't make the motion, so, someone's gonna
Um, Steve made the motion, I just need somebody to second it.
Uh, I'll second it, this is Lisa.
So we all, we all in agreement, Kristen?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes, I'm like, computer's gonna turn off.
Bob?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Roberto?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
So motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, uh, adjourn, anybody?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Third and fourth.
Everybody in agreement?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Ally?
Get your lobby and stuff, oh, sorry, guys, I'm.
We'd lost Ally.
Bob?
Yes.
Yes.
Nicole? Steven?
Yes.
Roberto?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Everybody have a good night.
Stay safe, everyone.